Let us pray. Lord, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for your blessings. Thank you for the rain, dear Lord, that keeps us alive, Lord. Thank you for all you do for us. We use this tonight in knowledge to help the county to make decisions. Give us safe passage as we leave to go home. We ask in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Today's lead is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioners. Brings it to establish a quorum. We have seven of eight. So we have a quorum. Approval of agenda. Nick, is there any changes to the agenda?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
With regard to the agenda, I thought we were going to talk about B thirty-one. I might be mistaken. I went through the notes. Are we holding that off till September? That would be Chip Davis's solar project?
Uh, yes.
Yes, in the minutes of the meeting last month, they were asked to hold a community meeting and not be placed on the agenda until September.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, raise your right hand. That passes unanimously. That brings us approval of minutes. We have the July twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three regular meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve as presented or is there any changes?
No move.
I have a motion and second to approve as presented. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Those minutes are approved. Okay. Nick, I bring this to public comment period. Do we have people, anyone signed up?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. We have eight citizens signed up, and the first will be Heidi Berto, followed by Karen Krebs.
Okay. Please come forward to the podium, state your name, full name, address, and you have three minutes.
You want me to wait?
Green.
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
Don't see that screen though.
Okay. All right. Hello, my name is Heidi Divya Berto, and I live in District Five. Did you get my email of August twenty-second? I repeat now for the record. The June sixteenth comp plan public input meeting was fun and refreshing. We got to play together with a purpose. We felt engaged and heard. That felt like democracy and action. In the game we played called Park, we were asked what we want to preserve, add, remove, keep out. Public participation, more and better, was written into the add list and also the preserve list. But this survey that we saw last week at the work session doesn't reflect a lot of that public input, and it still could before you, we thought you were going to finalize that tonight. For example, question number twenty-four asks, how do you feel metallic mining should be restricted in the county? The public did not use the word restrict. The public input used the words ban and prohibit. The supervisors asked the planners to ban metallic mining, not restrict it. This word crafting is off the mark. Please correct it. As written, it changes the answer. Last week, I asked Steve Doria, who serves my district five, to add a question to the survey about re-mining and reclamation. This is of huge concern to me and to many of the county which you represent. There are over seventy documented abandoned toxic metallic mines that are loaded with mercury and have not been reclaimed, let alone closed properly. Open shafts can swallow dogs and other critters. Paul Bush tells me he's been asked to test for mercury, et cetera, in various downstream ponds and streams that kids play in. The results are toxic. I asked Steve, would you please add to the comp plan survey metallic mining question number twenty-four? Do you want to, and so this would be the question, do you want to preserve health and safety by requiring strict and careful permitting for re-mining and reclamation of existing abandoned toxic metallic mines? Steve did bring this up. There was not much discussion. Steve expressed concern that he had not heard of this problem before. This is alarming to me. Who else on the planning commission is this news to? This explains your inaction to me. This is on your watch, folks, that you have done nothing to protect the county from new metallic mines coming in and nothing to clean up the mess that has been here for over a century. I think this is important to get this question on the survey, as this impacts a huge swath of the county along the Route Fifteen Gold Pyrite Corridor where most of the abandoned mines are. And it shows that we don't just want to stop metallic mining, almost finished, from coming in, and we want to clean up the mess that we have. I have lots more to say that three minutes will not allow. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, before we proceed with the next public comment, I've just been approached by a citizen in the audience that missed the cutoff time but wanted to request from you as chairman permission to be added to the public comment list.
They didn't sign up?
No, sir.
Um, how many do we have?
We have eight with.
I'll allow it then.
I'll let her know. I apologize for that interruption. Our next individual to speak will be Karen Krebs, followed by Chad Oba.
Good evening. My name is Karen Krebs. I'm a homeowner in District Five, and because I care about this county, I came here to encourage much more public participation in the comprehensive plan. I understand and appreciate that you're going to get this survey finalized and printed and put in stores, but that's not going to get you, get people to fill them out and give you answers. So I have some suggestions. I also have a team of people who are available to help neighbors, friends who care as I do and would help to make this happen. We request, want to request that the deadline for returning the surveys be pushed out to October thirty-first. The original, that was the original deadline on the draft comprehensive plan, and it took two months just to get to this point. So what's the rush for now? Buckingham is a very difficult place in which to get word out about anything, because there's no downtown, no radio, no TV, no local media. There is now a new Facebook page called What's Happening in Buckingham, and it's very current and active, and the survey could be published there. They also list many events going on in the county, and many, some of those events would be very good venues for having a table and putting the surveys out in. Churches and the schools are probably the best way to reach people, but they are not right now on the list of places where the survey is to be distributed. I hope that that will change. The introduction of the draft survey needs to invite people in and motivate them to take the time to fill out all those questions. And I noticed that there's no mention of how to take the survey online, and I would hope that that would be broadly communicated. If you do that, it will at least indicate to the public that you really care about public input and encourage it. So I would urge you to please do so. There are a few events coming up. The Farm Bureau is having a countywide candidate forum on September twenty-one, and that would be a great place to have somebody handing out surveys and explaining the importance to the planning commission. Yoberville is hosting a District Five candidate forum on Tuesday, October seventeenth at seven PM, and that's another opportunity to promote the comprehensive plan. Again, the October thirty-first deadline would be way more practical, and please make that the target date for returns. I thank you for making public participation a priority and letting everybody know how you feel about that. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, ma'am.
Chad Oba?
Yeah, there's a long list at the end. I want you to all have copies in front of you. So my name is Chad Oba. I live in District Six, five-seven-one Woods Road. Thank you for your service here. I appreciate it. And just to let you know that I am watching the progress of the comprehensive plan review. I see that a lot of what was talked about in the public input meeting and written down on lists as things we care about are not on the survey. Please do not approve the survey until it includes these very important concerns. It looks to me that question number twenty on the comp plan survey, the graph would be an appropriate space for getting a really quick look at the issues brought up in the community input park exercises. Would you please add the following list to number twenty, as you see at the bottom? These concerns were on the list generated by the public, which we have photographed, and I ask you to leave a few blank spaces for folks to add to. Without this list, it seems the survey is heavily slanted towards encouraging business and not quality of life. Quality of life does impact the economy. For example, our kids are more likely to return to the county if the water and the air are clean. We've banned toxic industry. We've stopped the sprawl. The arts and entrepreneurs are encouraged, and we feel like we are actually listened to. There are many, these are many of the topics generated by the public. Public participation, including voting for issues, voter intimidation, biodiversity, clean water, clean air, sustainable regenerative agriculture and forestry, rural preservation, protect old trees, bio solids, litter on roads, no metallic mines, crime, drugs, clean up abandoned metallic mines, superfund site, limit industrial solar, encourage community solar, require permitting of exploratory drilling, single-use plastics, night skies, reduce light pollution, activities, safe space for kids, encouragement, funding the arts, support public schools, the library, education and trades, co-work spaces, resources for entrepreneurs, health and wellness education, urgent care facility, rehab, senior facility, public boat ramps for the James River, expand the parks, peck with trails, bullying of corporations, slum lords, illegal drugs, stop sprawl, land planning, affordable housing, including tiny houses. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Jamie Smith, District Four, Maysville. Want to speak to you all, and I apologize for missing the public input meeting for the comprehensive plan in June. I like to read from the current comprehensive plan. The nature of agriculture in Buckingham County has been changing, much as it has been in most of Virginia and the nation in the past fifteen to twenty years. Traditional farmers have been giving way to mass agriculture production, found intensive livestock operations of poultry and hog operations. According to twenty-twelve Census of Agriculture, there were three hundred ninety-one farms in the county. This is a decrease from the total of four hundred and eleven farms located in the county according to two thousand and seven census. The average size of the farm located in Buckingham in twenty-twelve census was two fifteen acres. That's an increase over the two thousand and seven census of a hundred eighty-eight acres. The loss of small farms throughout the nation has been due to the increase in operating costs for such farms. Inflation has raised the cost of energy, farm equipment, fertilizers, and pesticides. Another factor has been the increased value of farmland and the subsequent increase in real estate taxes. I might add, since twenty-twenty, that's doubled. According to twenty-seventeen Ag Census, Buckingham increased the number of farms to four hundred and eight in addition of seventeen farms. I believe the twenty-twenty-two census, which will be available in twenty-twenty-four, will show even more. Of these farms, sixty-eight percent are less than a hundred and eighty acres, eighty-five percent made less than fifty thousand dollars in sales, not in profit in sales. Thirty-five percent made less than twenty-five hundred dollars. The comprehensive plan also includes a statement, rural agricultural forested areas continue to recognize that one of the richest assets is agriculture. Forestry and rural lands, Buckingham wants to continue to protect these areas and natural resources to ensure a rural quality of life is maintained. I believe allowing small farms to be able to produce an income for the farming family means accepting that small farms need strong local food systems and a strong direct-to-consumer customer base. It also means allowing small farms, as by right, to do production activities on their farm that became associated in the late twentieth century with industrial work. Smallholder farmers, including right here in Buckingham, are returning to a traditional farm-to-table model that necessitated completing certain activities on the farm. The limited size of the operations differentiates the operations from industrial farming operations and do not have the associated risk that large factory farm operations have. The state regulates what can be done on either operation, and I believe these regulations are sufficient. Buckingham zoning ordinances may already allow for some of this, but I would like to see the language specifically allowing traditional raising and preparing of agricultural commodities for sale on the farm included in the comprehensive plan and the zoning regulations. Virginia right-to-farm law also includes provisions for protecting farming from lawsuits and restrictive zoning regulation, and I believe Buckingham generally agrees with this, and I'd like to see the right-to-farm language also included in the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Kendah Honeman?
Good evening. I'm in Commissioner Doria's District Five. Kendah Honeman, is she certainly now? I'm curious about the agenda. It looks rather short, and I don't see gold or the comp plan on it. I'm wondering, will that be addressed tonight? Can anybody tell me if this agenda includes everything or if those are added to it?
I'm not supposed to engage, but no, we're, we have our own allocated time, the work sessions for the comp plan.
You do have time for the comp plan?
The work session. We're not doing it tonight.
Oh, you're not? Okay. I thought there was supposed to be approval, so you would do something by Wednesday night. That's why I heard.
We may talk about the survey, but that's all.
Okay. Thank you. So I'm a co-chair of the Friends of Buckingham Gold Committee, and I'm assistant representative of the State Agency Committee. So I've been working at this a long time regarding the gold mining, gathering a lot of information. And I really thank Commissioner Doria for seeing that the re-mining and reclamation would be added to the comp plan. I hope that is actually what's happening. And also, I believe it was Commissioner Gooden who requested rewording in the comp plan to not give leading questions, but to actually make it clear that this was something that wasn't a done deal. So we have offered to meet individually with commissioners to ask questions. Who want to ask questions, we can answer them, seeing that Commissioner Doria just was hearing. Seeing that Commissioner Doria just was hearing about the 70 abandoned mines, which are on these maps that we've been sharing for a couple of years, we want to make sure we're making ourselves clear and that you're hearing what we're offering to tell you that we've learned in these past three years. So if you'd like to have a personal meeting, each one of you individually, we'd be very happy to arrange that. I asked at the Board of Supervisors meeting about the fact that Kyanite had shown concern, and five of the employees had said that we were trying to ban Kyanite mining. And no one ever corrected them. I did make a comment that we've never said that. We've tried to make a really strong point that that's not what we want to do. I wish that you would be able to ask them, why would they be opposed to banning metallic mining? Is there something that they're not telling you? Is there more transparency needed? And you probably have the power to interact and find out those facts. So I thank you very much, and I would love to hear from you.
Thank you.
Cindy Morris.
Good evening. My name is Cindy Morris, and I reside at 465 Morris Forest Lane in Buckingham, District Three, New Store Precinct. First, I would like to commend you for your forward thinking, updating the county's Comprehensive Plan, and utilizing a citizen survey in that preparation to garner what your constituents are thinking about their community as it relates to quality of life, growth management, economic development, parks and recreation, even transit planning. Many more communities are using surveys to get a better sense of public opinion on a wide range of planning-related issues. Surveys are effective at reaching residents who do not ordinarily participate in typical public involvement events such as this one. Providing genuine opportunities for citizens—for citizen participation can sometimes be difficult. Those who are participating in in-person meetings are often the citizens with the greatest passion, the most time, the least reserve, and the most at stake. Sometimes viewpoints of families with children, wage earners, steeped in the daily pressures of making ends meet, and sick or handicapped residents may not be adequately considered. After listening to the Planning Commission Work Session Meeting on August 21st, I have the following concerns and comments regarding the citizen survey. First, as was pointed out at the meeting by several Planning Commissioners, some of the questions are clearly biased. I agree with you and with Todd Fortune of the CRC. It is important to maintain objectivity and neutrality. This includes questions on politicized issues relating to solar panels, metallic mining, the suspected 70 toxic mines, and any other controversial issues that the county has recently encountered. These types of questions can introduce bias and subjectivity and potentially lead to skewed results. By avoiding such questions, the survey can maintain its objectivity and provide more reliable data. There are more suitable platforms and methods for addressing controversial issues in a way that encourages informed and productive discussions. Second, a three-week timeframe for collecting survey responses was discussed at the meeting. This is a very short window of opportunity for citizens wanting to make their views heard on a Comprehensive Plan that will have major impacts well, well into the future. Doubling that time to six weeks would surely increase the response rate and include as many interested individuals as possible. In closing, I want to thank you for your time and commitment to serving the citizens of Buckingham, and it's my hope that you will sincerely consider my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Catherine Timnakis.
Is this correct? Catherine Timnakis, Glenmore District, Blessings. Teaching Moments. Last time, I appealed for the Planning Commission to refocus on welcoming healthy living businesses, keeping the economy local. After communicating strategic essentials, I appealed for young entrepreneurs to become prosperity leaders. For the time, the mic was cut off, showing that the panel had not one minute, not 60 seconds for the most important to all of our lives, sustainable finances, quality of life. Not a word from the audience. Alert, Farmville Herald for your editorial lamenting. Editor Brian—outside, two young men who had spoken against gold mining were relieved that one person had stood up for them. These are young people experiencing strong social relationships. They were not surprised that when I presented for them, the mic was cut off. One young man who works in the health industry made me aware that posing authority on the stage, controlling the narrative at every meeting, will not support any advocacy beneficial for young people. Here's words. The mic is shut off so that they can bury the truth that we young people are good people. Repeat. Bury the truth that we young people are good people. Editor Brian, thousands of Buckingham citizens are dispossessed by their local government designated by their age with the synergy of compliant community partners. Never on any agenda. Advocacy not permitted. No respectable cultural standing. Obviously, presence determines policy empowerment. That's why banks are on the main road. Old-school ways, disassociated from our best nature. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mike Morris.
Good evening. My name is Mike Morris. I'm from District Three. My representatives are Pete Kapaczynski—Pete—and Don Matthews. So I'll be brief. Some of this has already been mentioned. I think a return of the survey in three weeks is just really short. It needs to be extended. And also, I agree that some of the survey questions seem to be leading to a conclusion, perhaps. For example, number 24, it says that metal mine development restrictions seems to lead to the foregone conclusion that there will be restrictions, maybe there won't be. And I'm speaking more specifically from the mine's perspective there, from my heart, not the mine's heart. I'll come back to that in a second, but I'd like to—I want to know this because I don't know. Where are the 70 mines? How are they documented? What are their locations? What is the definition of toxicity? I don't have that information. I would honestly be surprised if there are 70 toxic mine sites in the county. I don't argue that there might not be some, but 70, and where are they, and what's the definitions involved? I'll go ahead and say that in a previous meeting, I had underscored that the Kyanite Mine is already an open pit mine. The ground is open, and that's what I mean when I start talking about metallic mine development. And that's what I had spoken about previously. It's already open. If we run up on a mineral in the ground that's there to be exploited, why would we not exploit that mineral, as long as we did in understating federal regulations and done it safely? So there is that point about the open hole already being there. So I've heard the Friends of Buckingham mentioned several times. With all due respect, perhaps I class myself as another friend of Buckingham because I have different opinions sometimes. I don't think being a friend of Buckingham is an all-encompassing thing. I don't think simply by the name of a club that that represents every citizen of Buckingham. From my own experience, I can say it doesn't represent me. But I was there at that meeting that was mentioned, and what the guys that were speaking that night were saying, what they were expounding, was that we have a good reputation, we have done a good job, we've worked really hard, we follow the rules, we follow the regulations religiously, we've gotten awards for that. I didn't get the impression that anybody was saying that anybody was trying to ban Kyanite mining. The impression I got was we were trying to be banned in regard to any new metal that we might find. That was more my understanding of that. I think the employees were simply attesting to good neighbor mining that already exists and has for decades. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
And the last speaker is Kristin G.
Thank you for letting me be a late ad. I broke my glasses, so I'm kind of a mess, but I'm here. Again, my name is Kristin G., and I live in District Three. As you may not know, I'm a new-ish member of the Council for Go Virginia, Region Three. And if you are aware of that organization, and paraphrasing from its website, Go Virginia is a business-led economic development initiative that invests in collaborative projects with the goal of bringing more businesses and opportunities to the Commonwealth, thus leading to higher-paying jobs in the region. Region Three supports economic growth across 13 counties in southern Virginia. Developing a new Comprehensive Plan is an important and possibly onerous—for you all—process, but it is important to have a well-organized and considered comp plan in place to keep the county headed in a direction of smart, harmonious growth, and to provide needed and desired resources and opportunities to its residents. As part of the process, it is important to gauge those priorities that are most important to existing and future residents. I understand you may be offering a survey to residents and other interested parties to help you identify those priorities. I would submit the importance of making that survey as widely available as you can—to reach as many constituents as possible. I would ask that it be open for as long as is reasonable within your process and timeline to encourage as many people to respond as may be able. I find that when I attend these meetings, it is usually because I have a distinct interest in something that is occurring, that's on the agenda, and the rest of the time, I—and I believe most of the other people in the county—leave these important decisions to you, who have been chosen, to make the studied and well-considered decisions for the county. Rather than trusting that those of us who choose to attend these meetings or respond to a limited survey adequately represent the wide breadth of the county, I ask you to do your best to reach as many residents as possible through this process. When gauging the priorities of county residents, the priorities raised by a small minority to you all and at these meetings may not be at all the priorities raised by the wider population. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's all the speakers. Okay. I'll close the public comment period, and we'll go to old business. First thing up is a public hearing case for our cell tower on Axdel Road.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is for case 23 S U P 330. The tax map and location of this property is tax map 14 parcel 59, contains approximately 44.98 acres, and it's located at or near 2462 Axdel Road, Scottsville, Virginia, in the Slate River Magisterial District. It is Zoned A1, and their request a couple of months ago was to obtain a special use for it for the purpose of constructing the 199-foot Monopole Communications Tower. Emily Lauer, the applicant and agent for U S Cellular, is available virtually this evening to address questions, comments, or concerns. And in regards to the public hearing, there is no one signed up.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. I do have to open up the public hearing, even though we don't have anybody signed up. But do any of the commissioners have any questions for the applicant prior to me to sort of going through the formality of opening up the public hearing? All right. I will now open up the public hearing for this case. Nicky, would you repeat that we have nobody signed up?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, we have no one signed up to speak for the public hearing.
Okay. I will now close the public hearing—
Yes, sir.
—and turn it back over to the commission. It's a pleasure of the commission for this cell tower, which I will remind the commission that the consultant, Cityscape, has endorsed this tower. Working in that area, it certainly needs some improvement in cell coverage, and this will help considerably. Yes, sir.
I think we've heard considerable amount about this particular cell tower, and I do believe in that particular area, it would serve to benefit the county and the people in that area. I thought we made that fairly clear when they appeared, so I would move that we push this forward to the—
Okay. We have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Yes, sir.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All right. That moves on forward to the Board of Supervisors. Our next case is the solar, R W Energy Blue Rock Solar.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, the next case on the agenda this evening is 23 S U P 329. Landowners are Blue Rock Resources LLC and J A M N Limited Partnership LLP. Applicant is R W Clean Energy, and the case before us is Blue Rock Solar LLC. This case was actually introduced in June, and at the request of the commission, the applicant scheduled a community meeting in July. I'm sure they're here with an update from that community meeting and also to discuss any questions and concerns. The request is the same as when this case was introduced in June, and their request is to schedule a public hearing for this request, if it would be at the pleasure of the Planning Commission.
Okay. Thank you, Nicky. Would a representative like to come forward? Commissioners may have a few questions. I have only one, but I understand from the narrative that you only had one participant—
That's correct.
—at your public manager community meetings. So I'll ask now, any commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Yes, Pete?
Yeah. That community meeting was—I'm assuming it was widely advertised. You say you only had one person there?
Yeah. We advertised two different weeks.
For two weeks, and you advertised where?
The Farmville Herald.
At the Herald?
Yeah.
And you only had one individual that came?
Correct.
Okay.
What'd they have to say?
Just questions about the project, and that was it. Questions about us.
I did have one question that I wanted to ask. Between the buffers that you leave for the drains, the creek drains, how close will the panels be to that? You'll probably—you'll have grass between the actual fence line panels and the buffer area.
Yeah. So I think you're asking two questions. So the minimum setback that we adhere to in the current—it's a conceptual design that we're seeking approval on, right? We have to go through the Board of Supervisors for the approval at the local level—
Right.
—and then there's a permit-by-rule process run through the state for final approvals on the full site design.
Right.
We'll then go into—
I guess the question is just a simple one, just to see—
Fifty-foot-off bank.
You got the buffer 50, 60 feet, whatever it is, of tree line. From the tree line back to the solar panels where it's fenced in, that's going to be cleared, but it'll be grass, correct?
So there will be limited buffer? Are you talking about from property boundaries to the fence?
No, from the buffer, the creek buffers that you leave in. You're going to have a setback—
The setback will be 50 feet, correct?
Right.
—from the bank in the conceptual—
And then from the buffer to where the panels are fenced in, that will be clear because you got to get back from exposure or shade from the—
Yeah. So when we look at the buffer between panel and fence right now, it's 75 feet—
Okay. That's what I was asking. In other words, you got the buffer, tree line buffer, but then also there's going to be a grass buffer too, to be—so you got additional buffer, correct?
That's right, sir.
Right. That's what I was really asking, that question. Any other commissioners have a question for the applicant?
We get Liam hundred-and-some acres, but how much of it is in Cumberland?
The whole project—I had that written down. Outside of what—just from a land standpoint, there's 35 acres that fall into—of property that fall into Cumberland County. I think when you look at the—one of the presentation slides, there are— Outside of what, just from a land standpoint, um, there's thirty-five acres that fall into, of property, that fall into, um, Cumberland County. I think when you look at the, in one of the presentation slides, there are seven-hundred-and-eighteen acres of total development within that eleven-hundred-and-twenty-seven acre, three parcels. Six-hundred-and-eighty-six fall into Buckingham County, um, the other fall into Cumberland. So it's right around about thirty-five acres.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Just a couple of questions. Number one, I did not see in your, in your, in the book here, or I do, I didn't see a topographical map, so can you explain to me, can you tell me, you said that this property's flat, I went out and saw it, it looked pretty flat to me. Is there any degradation of the property? If so, what's the percentage?
So I, I don't have the exact percentage for you. I think, you know, when we're looking at the, the design criteria for the project, obviously there's a proposed grading plan that will go into effect that will need to be reviewed by the county as part of the sediment erosion control and storm water management plan. There's, you know, that's, that's part of the detailed final engineering of the project. There's basically three agencies that will have to approve that plan. Buckingham County is one of them, um, the Francisco Water Conservation District, um, and then Virginia Department of Energy, or Environmental Quality, so D E Q, will have to opine on that.
So you do recognize there's a slope, and you still have to have that worked out?
So there's, there's portions of the area that may be slope. We're also looking at two different tracker technologies, so as I mentioned in the, the first meeting in June, um, you know, we're, we're planning to stack the panels on trackers that track east-west. There's a newer version of tracker that allows for more extreme slope, so you have essentially less earthwork that needs to be done, and we are considering both options at this point.
Okay, uh, second question is, uh, in your application, uh, and this was brought to me, by the way, by another individual who, who wrote a letter, and I was, you know, I was reading the application myself. It seems to me that you indicate that you intend to work six days, ten hours, but then in the same document, you indicate that you're gonna work seven days and may have more than three shifts, or more than two shifts. So which is it? Are you gonna, I know you're gonna do pilings only on six days?
So.
You're gonna make, I guess the concern is noise and traffic. So what is your work schedule? Are you gonna do six days, seven days? And is it just for the pilings, you intend to do six days?
Ultimately, our work schedule will be decided by the Board of Supervisors, hopefully, if we can get approved. Um, I think ideally, we would look at, you know, obviously restricting all noise-related activities to six days, um, so nothing on Sunday. Um, I think we would be open to a conversation, um, to address the constituents that you guys represent and, and make sure there's some schedule that, that adheres to the requirements.
Well, let me ask Mr. Chairman, is that a condition that we need to consider here? I mean, I, I've got some concerned people asking me whether or not we're gonna do six or seven days and what noise, uh, what, what the traffic and the noise issue will be, and I have a question about that a little later. Uh, I mean, is that a condition that we should put on? Uh, I mean, with regard to piling or, or any kind of noise-making, uh, construction to, to.
Yeah, absolutely, that's in our purview, if you wanna make that a condition.
I would, I would move that we make that condition.
We, we would be open to, to limiting any noise activities, you know, especially on Sundays.
Ms. Edmondson, is that something we can?
If, um, condition number eight addresses, um, activity for the construction and operation, there are two different, um, aspects to condition eight. It addresses all pile-driving activities should be limited to the hours from the earlier of sunrise or eight AM to the later of six PM or sunset, Monday through Saturday. And it goes on to say that the applicant may request permission from zoning administrator to conduct piling-driving activity on Sunday, but such permission will be granted or denied at, at the discretion of the zoning administrator. In section B, all other construction activity within the project area shall be permitted Monday through Sunday in accordance with the provisions of the county's noise ordinance.
And I did read that, so I'm asking for a condition to allow only six days where there's any noise involved.
Six days, they've covered that in section A, 'cause typically pile-driving activity is where the most noise, um, would be detected by the, the neighbors. Um, all other construction activity would be, probably better equipped to answer that question, but trucks, other equipment.
Be very similar to farming equipment, large farming equipment.
So do you want something more specific with the pile-driving? 'Cause it's been limited from eight AM as such with sunrise and six PM or later.
You know, I'm not, I, I never built one of these places, so I'm not a technician, but I gotta tell you, there are people around who would prefer a six-day work week on this construction project. I don't know if that's a problem for you or not, but that would be what I would suggest you do. But I can't say that that's gonna be, if that's gonna create a problem for you completing this project, then certainly that's not something that you would be willing to consider. So obviously, the people who are contacting me are con, are concerned about both the traffic and the noise for the, from, while the construction of this project is moving forward, and on a Sunday particularly, they're concerned. So whatever can be done to mitigate that, I would suggest we put that as a condition.
Possibly section B, this is construction activity within the project area should be minute, permitted Monday through Sunday. Are you asking for that to be amended Monday through Saturday?
I, I, I would suggest so, and I have people who've asked me for that.
I would.
Applicant, if you agree to that amendment, then this condition will change to reflect.
I think one, one thing we would ask for is, in the event that we have a request for overtime hours, that we be allowed to seek that with approval of the, the commission.
So long as you would.
Limited still to noise-related activities.
And it would have to be on special permission, correct?
Correct.
I'm, I'm okay with that, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, I, I have no issues with that.
Okay, second question had to do with, uh, Mohill Road coming off of fifteen. That's a pretty sharp turn, and I noticed in your, in your proposal, you're saying there's really not an issue with traffic moving in and out from fifteen on, on any route going toward the construction site. I mean, I, I've been on that, that's a pretty sharp turn. Is that, is that any concern to you? I mean.
So in, in, in the event that we have to expand a, an entrance, um, you know, I think we would always seek that with VDOT.
Then you have some big trucks moving in and out of there, are you not?
Correct.
So.
I, I don't run our construction though, so, I mean, I, I've, I can give you from a experience on a project that we just did in Tennessee, that there was a location that we had to cross over a median, um, and we had to move that median and expand a driveway, actually create a new driveway specifically to address the, the construction access and safety concerns on that project.
All I'm suggesting here, Mr. Chairman, is that there, it appears to me from this contract that there's, or from this, uh, this proposal, that there's gonna be a significant amount of traffic, probably some fairly large trucks moving in and out of Mohill. Is that, by the way, is that the road you intend to take to get to the project site, Mohill Road?
So there's, there's two entrances that we showed. Again, those are all conceptual, right? Nothing's been fully designed.
Right.
We're, we're at a ten percent level of design, maybe a little bit long.
Now, I'm told the second road has a tendency to flood during rainy we, wet weather. I guess today would've been a good day to check it out.
I haven't driven in on a day like today.
But, uh, I, I'm, I'm more concerned about the, the turns in and out of, off and onto Route fifteen, in particular Mohill, because it's such a, it's an obtuse turn. It's a real sharp turn.
I think even if we have to put in a temporary stoplight, I mean, those are all things that our, our construction crews are gonna take into account and, and seek. Right, so when we look at like public safety on entrance and access, if that's a concern, you know, we'd obviously be willing and would seek, um, to put in conditions that would protect the constituents.
So, Mr. Chairman, could there be another condition where we hear from whoever the expert is in this area to determine whether or not there ought to be some sort of a, a traffic light, or some, some, something that would mitigate the impediment? On this particular turn, I'm, I'm suggesting you're gonna have some problems on fifteen.
Well, I, I understand. I think if this is gonna probably fall, your question would probably fall under condition twenty, where a construction traffic management plan and mitigation measures shall be developed by the applicant and submitted to the Virginia Department of Transportation, 'cause technically that's their, uh, in their control. So I think your question is very legit, but it should be, uh, fall under that, uh, traffic management plan, Pete.
Do we need to know what the answer is before this moves forward?
I don't know that we would need to know. I mean, as, as long, 'cause the, the highway situation, entrance and all that is gonna be, is, is under the authority of the.
VDOT.
VDOT anyway, yeah.
I know one thing on it, said VDOT already said they gotta move a hundred to two hundred feet, the entrance to the place, that might not be the road Utah moved, but.
That, that's off, that's off of Mohill Road, right? But that's not off of fifteen.
Right, exactly.
So if they're willing to do it off Mohill Road, I don't know why they're not worried about fifteen, that's where your traffic is.
Yeah, I mean, a, again, we haven't gone through the process with VDOT. It's a stepwise process, right? We seek the, the, the local jurisdictional approval, um, and then we still have that, that broader state approval that we have to seek after via the permit-by-rule process, which incorporates all the VDOT, all the DEQs, right? So we, we've still got a lengthy road ahead of us, and obviously, all the design criteria that gets done from the conceptual that we're showing you today, which is a representation of the project that we would like to build or seek to build, that all gets changed through the various regulatory approvals that we have to go through.
Yeah, those are the questions I had. I, you know, the one condition, and I, I don't know how you handle the other condition with regard to fifteen, but my, you know, I'm, I'm inclined to think that if nothing gets changed, you're gonna have some real difficulty turning into Mohill Road. That, that's, I'm just making mention of it, Mr. Chairman.
Understand.
I, I, as a, as a commissioner, I'd like to know how that gets remedied. I don't, I don't know if it's in our purview or not.
I would say you probably, your best recourse would be to petition and, uh, VDOT, and say, "Look, we have concerns, the citizens that have concerns," but, you know, try to get an answer from them once this plan, if, if it goes that far, this plan is developed.
And we're happy to, to have a sidebar with you, Pete, to understand the concerns there, and we're happy to incorporate that in, share that design, that this, the traffic management plan that gets submitted to VDOT with you prior to that.
I, I honestly would think that that should be part of the package. I'd like to have that, yeah, if that's our review.
Yes, I have no problems if you wanna provide it, yes, sir.
So you'll provide that as part of the, the entire package here?
When, when it comes to it, I don't think we're gonna have it in this, this hearing, I don't think we're gonna have it at the public hearing, but prior to construction, absolutely, as we're going through the process with VDOT.
How about prior to the board approval?
I'll have to get back with you on that.
All right. Okay.
I'm, I'm just, so, um, my, my concern is where we're gonna be at from an engineering standpoint, knowing that, you know, even after the Board of Supervisors, if we get to an approval and get a yes from the Board of Supervisors, we still have to go through, you know, the process with the state, um, the permit-by-rule process, which may change the design of the project, limited to whatever conditions are put on to us by the Board of Supervisors, obviously. And that may change, you know, our design criteria, so we're not gonna have a hundred percent, ninety percent construction plans, you know, even when we get to the, the final approval with the Board of Supervisors, unfortunately.
All right, well, thank you, I appreciate all that, thank you.
We can have it as a condition prior to start of construction, that that is addressed.
I'd, I'd appreciate seeing that. Thank you.
Okay. Any other commissioners?
Well, coming, coming from Buckingham, I could see the issue that you're talking about, but if they're coming over to Farmville.
It's easy.
You wouldn't be no trouble to slide her up the road, but.
Right, coming from Buckingham, it's a turn.
Yeah, just understanding where he's gonna be hauling stuff from, um, are you talking about rock, are you talking about, what would you, what would your trucks be hauling a lot of, do you know?
So you, you're gonna have, I think, the, the heaviest equipment, when you look at it, is your, your transformers, right? So that's gonna be your wide loads, that's gonna be, you know, by far the heaviest by weight. You're gonna have quite a bit of solar panels that are gonna come in, those are gonna come crated, um, so in a tractor-trailer. Um, you're gonna have a lot of steel and aluminum. Um, you're gonna have mine, you know, textiles for some portions of roads. Um, there may be some areas where culverts get expanded, there's existing temporary operation on this property, so a lot of the crossings are already established. We will have to work with the U S Army Corps of Engineers to expand those, so you'll have, you know, general equipment that will go into a culvert expansion. Um, you know, we don't put, you know, we're not, we're not laying rock underneath all the panels, if that's what you're asking, right? We, we plan to reseed, um, so we're not bringing in heavy rock to an extent. There will be areas for sediment erosion control, where we have, we'll have to put down textiles, i.e. some type of rock to limit dusting.
All I was saying is anything that's coming from Farmville, trucks would be fine going up that road. Coming from Buckingham, you're going down a hill, and there'll be an angle.
Right.
So it, you know, you completely stop in the middle of the road, try, try to turn. I think it's, you'd be stopping traffic.
Right.
Yeah, and when we were looking at the site access, you know, the, the broader point of that southern point was, was really for long-term access, for operations maintenance, and you're talking about guys coming to pick up trucks.
Okay. Um, last question, and I promise it'll be last question, do you have, are, are there local people who are partners? I, I saw two affidavits in there that are power of attorney affidavits. Are, are there other partners, other, that are partnering with your company, uh, in this project that are, that are county people?
No, um, to the extent of, of what do you mean by partner? Are you talking about financial partner?
I don't know, I, I'm, I'm just curious, I don't think there's any more operating partners.
The, no, the project's a hundred percent owned by R W E Clean Energy. Um, it's a hundred percent funded to date, and will be a hundred percent funded on balance sheet for construction if it's approved.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for the commissioners?
Yeah, going back to the, to the highway part, will we get a report, uh, impact report from VDOT at some time?
I think.
What we can look at?
Um, I, well, we have to do the, the traffic plan, right? So we're happy to share that, um, you know, when that's, that's completed. Um, you know, we also talked about a, a road use agreement, um, and bonding for protection on, on any damages that may be caused through the course of construction from the project. Uh, again, we're, we're very amenable to, to entering a new agreement, specifically a road use, um, agreement with the county that has bonded protection. It documents, you know, what, what we've done historically on these, these deals, is we have, um, you know, our surveyors go out and document, um, both with, with written surveys and also, um, uh, photos, um, the existing conditions of the roads, um, pre-construction, during construction, post-construction, and then obviously documentation of any repairs that are done as a result of, of damages that we may cause, or just any improvements that have may, may have been provided by R W E and their construction teams. So, again, I think we're, we're happy to, to open up discussion with the county attorney, have that as a condition to the Board of Supervisor's approval if we ever get there. But, you know, it's something that, that we obviously don't wanna leave your roads in worse conditions than they are. Hopefully, we leave them in better condition.
Okay, well, we usually get an impact report from VDOT, and I was just concerned that, I haven't seen it, and I didn't know if we had one yet, or you have anything. So we, we hadn't gotten that far yet.
Not that I'm aware of.
Right, it's, uh, if anything, it would get to be preliminary, because if they have to do that management, uh, traffic management plan. Any other questions for the applicant for, at this time? Thank you, sir, you can go ahead and sit down.
Thank you, Chairman, thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, well, it's a pleasure of the commission. Are we gonna move this forward to public hearing, or deny?
I'd make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, move.
To move it to public hearing.
Move forward. Have a motion and a second to move us forward to public hearing. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, you'll be back in September for your public hearing, sir. Thank you. Nikki, new business, I see we have no new business at this time.
I don't have any new cases to present or introduce to you this evening.
Okay, uh, you wanna do your builder reports and your administrator report?
Um, the building permit, permit, uh, report was submitted for informational purposes, and as far as zoning administrator, what I have for you this evening is actually some information from a private citizen that contacted me today in regards to, um, the citizen survey. I know that you all had discussed it in length last week at the work session, I hadn't received any feedback, I'm not sure if any of you had. Todd made the recommended changes, uh, that he indicated that he would last Monday, they were forwarded to you for your review. Um, I did print copies of the amendments, just to add to the record, um, there was a change to question number twelve, um, on insert, it states Buckingham County does not build or maintain roads, that is done by the state of Virginia. What road improvements would you like to see in the county, um, and ask the state to undertake, and please be specific. There's a question, uh, thirteen regarding trails or pedestrian bike paths. The addition to this question would be, do you want the county to raise taxes to add these particular pedestrian, um, trail, walking trails and bike paths? And then what types of residential development does Buckingham County need in the future? This was number fourteen, um, that I've highlighted. Moving forward, in order to provide jobs and increase tax revenue, what types of industrial development would you favor for Buckingham County in the future? And there are, um, uh, different areas, some, one question, uh, answer could be none, manufacturing wood products, manufacturing trail, train and rail car, manufacturing packaging supplies, utility-scale solar, call center, business process outsourcing, distribution center, food and beverage processing, data center, and mining. Then I believe that the other additions that this citizen added, um, were in tandem with metallic mining, it says, are you in favor of additional, I think it should be additional mining, not metallic mining, development in Buckingham County if properly metallic mining, development in Buckingham County if properly regulated? Twenty-six, the question is, how do you feel about cell service in Buckingham County? And the additions would be, would you favor more cell towers to improve cell service in Buckingham? Where would you want more towers to improve, improve service? And then twenty-seven is in regards to the reclamation, and this amendment states, are you in favor of Buckingham County spending tax dollars for the reclamation or re-mining of abandoned mines in, in Buckingham? Oh, like I said, I just had a visit from a citizen that wishes to remain anonymous, but these were some changes that they had submitted today, so I didn't want to leave those out since.
Okay. I do see on this that he, Todd has September thirtieth as a finalized date.
Per his email, instead of the three weeks that I believe he had stated last week at the work session, he has increased that time period to five to six weeks. Do you find that sufficient or?
Well, I don't know. It's been some questions, some comments to maybe extend it a little longer. If we were to go to our work session in October, that would not throw us too far behind our schedule, would it? On, on completing the comprehensive plan. That would give two more weeks. That would make it, what's, eight weeks, seven to eight weeks?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, in September at the work session, it states, per the tentative outline and schedule that CRC had provided, we will be working on a draft phase of one and two, discussing that draft and making recommendation and the status report on surveys. In October, that's the actual intended date at the work session to present the results. So if, at September thirtieth, that would give them over two weeks, well, over two weeks, two and a half weeks to.
Do you recall the date of our work session in October?
It should be the sixteenth. Let me look at, let me make sure, because I've been thrown off a little bit. The sixteenth, the twenty-third is a regular meeting.
I know it is. When he talked, he couldn't, he felt like he could get a lot of it together, but not all of it in that two-week span. So we could add a week to it and go to the first week, end of the first week in October, and that would give us six weeks, seven weeks. What's the, what's, how's it be, commission feel about that, add an additional week to?
How many places, Mr. Chairman, how many places do we intend to, to, where, where and how many places will we be distributing these surveys?
Well, if you remember, I don't know if I.
I remember some of the stuff, but I, I don't know if there's a specific plan.
It's quite a few. It's going to be online, it's quite a few, and then there's also be available, because I asked him that we and any citizen could pick up copies and distribute themselves, too.
So when would they be available?
When we finalize the survey.
It could be as early as tonight if this is finalized.
So CRC is the one that's going to take them all around, all these different places?
Yeah, then it'll be posted online, and then it will be copies left that you can pick up and, as an individual, and take to, to, excuse, to a store anywhere or, or a meeting.
I've got some places I'd like to distribute, so I'm, if we can, if I can get them, I can go ahead and distribute, but I'd pick up the copies here at the county?
Where that you are able to print it, I'm sure we would print the copies here.
All right.
Yes, sure.
Also, and I just want to clarify with Jamie, aren't you using the notification system too for our code? Or link for that? So everybody who gets a lightning strike.
Yes, ma'am.
And a senior message at any of that message, anybody in that message system in the county will also get notification.
Yes, ma'am, you're correct on that.
That's what I told somebody, that, that those were some of the resources, and that they could also pick them up here at the administration building by asking for the planning administrator.
Okay. All right, so I guess the question is, he's got, Todd has got scheduled September thirtieth. I'm suggesting give it another week, and that'll still give him a week or a little bit more to accumulate what he can before October work session.
So what is that, seven weeks then?
I think that will give us seven weeks, yeah.
Almost two months.
Yeah.
I like that better than three weeks.
Census is, go ahead and do that then? All right, that's what we'll do then. Nikki, do you need a decision tonight on this survey as, now or?
Well, the quicker the better, if you're ready for it to go live. Certainly, if there's any, you know, changes that you'd like to make now, I'll get those to Todd as quickly as possible, so that if not this evening, tomorrow.
Yes, ma'am.
I just need for clarification, the copy you gave us is a citizen's.
Feedback.
Feedback.
Yes, ma'am.
This is not the survey that we, yeah, okay. That's what I wanted to be sure, because I was like, this does not look like what we agreed on, and I was wondering what happened. Thank you.
What's the pleasure of the commission? Do you feel comfortable to make a decision tonight, or do you want a little bit more time?
Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd be comfortable making a decision as long as, I mean, I'm looking at twenty-five on this document you handed out, and you're saying, are you in favor of additional metallic mining? Are, are you going to add, are you in favor of additional mining on the survey, Ms. Edmondson, or what, what is?
That's only the citizen feedback I received today. That is not what you all viewed last week from Todd Fortune. After your work session, he emailed each of you what the changes were and, and what will be presented. Tonight, I'm only giving you some feedback that I received today.
Okay.
That's all that is. Unless you feel the desire to make any of those changes, the, the survey that you received last week with the indicated changes at the work session will be what will go live.
One other question, Mr. Chairman. I think we discussed last at the work session demographic, results regarding various demographics. I mean, I'm assuming that, that the survey will show demographically some of these answers. Is that what you understood too?
Yes. The changes he made, he emailed everyone. Did you receive it?
Yeah, I did.
Yeah, and I think it's in there. To me, it looked like it covered what we were trying to accomplish there.
All right.
So I guess my question is, do you want to, do you need more time? Or do you feel like the survey is sufficient for what we're trying to gather here? The, the revised one that Todd sent us, emailed.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Again, for clarification, Nikki, does that we, we email Todd or to do it as a board to say, go ahead with what he sent out?
If in response to the emailed changes that you've received last week, if you all feel that that is the survey that you'd like to adopt, move forward, finalize, and actually set in place for the citizens to, to utilize, by consensus, you can let me know this evening, and I will respond to Todd's email indicating that at the planning commission this evening. Did any of you choose to respond to Todd last week after you reviewed the survey? That's okay, that's why we're back here this evening. So if, if that survey serves all the purposes and had the necessary changes that you were, that you gave last week, just let me know, and I will send an email confirming that with Todd.
Okay. With consensus, how's the commission feeling? Feel like a, got enough information?
I'm fine with it.
I'm fine. Okay, we got a consensus that we'll go with the revised survey that Todd had emailed us. When will that be available online and for people to pick up? Nikki, do you have any idea?
Todd, as of today, when we spoke, he's, he's ready to move forward with this. I'm going to email him momentarily this evening, it should be ready tomorrow.
Okay. All right, very good.
We'll place that on our website. I don't know how long it will take. The QR code, we can move forward with the notification system here at the county. We can also link this survey to the county website. As far as the paper distributions, that's, I don't know what Todd's deadline is for that, but the more that, if any of you are available to help within your districts to, to put that at some of those places that were designated and county staff, we can make it happen as quickly as possible. The electronic avenues, the digital avenues will be available immediately.
All right, very good. Yes, sooner you can get the copies for individuals, planner, commission, and individual citizen to pick up and, and distribute, I think a better off would be. All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Nikki, I used the QR code, and it did work. It did take me to the survey. I, I tested all the portions of it.
Todd and Lauren indicated that they had as well on their personal devices, so.
Yeah, but my skills are a little different.
Okay.
And I just wanted to make sure that if I told somebody how to do that, because I put it out that that's how, we, would be a QR code and on the Buckingham alerts and around places within the county, and someone wanted to know if they could pick up copies to distribute to their churches, and I told them to come see you.
Okay. All right, very good. All right. Brings us commission matters and concerns. Any commissioners have anything they want to voice at this time?
Just a quick one. So I know we have a couple of solar projects scheduled to come up in the next couple of months, as we still continue to talk about the acreage and that whatever that policy's going to look like. Do we have any update on the Dominion project from this time last year?
It's still, as far as I know, is not suspended, but I guess.
Is it within our purview to ask them what their intentions are?
Well, that, the Pineside case has been in a suspension for consideration since August of 2022. They did, Dominion put in a letter of request. It's been a year ago now. I have not had any contact with Dominion. Is formal letter, letter to Dominion requesting a status?
I, I would like a status update, just because.
If you can get one, would be nice. I'm not sure you'll get a definitive answer, but you can at least attempt.
I don't want them to think that they're at the front of the line somehow, just because their project is the oldest.
Yeah, I understand. If we could, that would be nice to see if we can get some kind of update from them.
In regard to some of the changes and undertakings that the board is looking at now with the acreage, it may be very fair time to do so. I'll consult with the county administrator, Carl Carter, and the two of us will gather to put out a formal request to Dominion to respond.
Okay, thank you, Nikki. Any?
That may still, I guess, be the county's position if they, if that still is, but it's like a couple of months.
Okay, any other commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I had an occasion to speak to Mr. Wright last week, just on the side. We talked a little bit about his efforts going back to the state to, to have them, as I, as we requested, have them separate metal mining from non-metal mining. It's my opinion that'll never happen. I think Mr. Wright did not disagree, and, but you can ask him for yourself, which, which sort of puts me back to where I was earlier, wondering why, in fact, we're not just being a little more aggressive in addressing the issue. I mean, I know you mentioned that we should wait till January. I, I don't know that it's, I don't know why we're waiting. I think that, quite frankly, we need to talk about the zoning. I, I think we need to talk about what it is, if there's anything that we need to do in order to make the process, particularly as it relates to some of our residents concerned more transparent. But I, I don't think, I think waiting for the state to come up with a solution that will solve our problem here in Buckingham is, I, I believe that's a dream that just will not occur. So, quite frankly, I would like to see us sit down and address through zoning a resolution that might help get through. I'm, I'm not all for restrict, believe me, I do not want to restrict mine. I don't think constitutionally we can, all right? But I do believe we can ask for regulations, and I think we can help companies that want to do this, not just allowing them to do it, but, but helping them along and also helping our, our residents by making transparent the processes that they intend to use. Now, I will tell you, in my own opinion, I have no question about Kynite. I think they're, and I told you before, I'll stand behind this, I think they're an exemplary company, okay? And I agree, by the way, with Mr. Morris, if they're going to dig up a shovel full of, of metallic material that's saleable, why shouldn't they be able to sell it? I, I think that's absolutely their right. But I also believe that they're a Kynite company, and their purpose, they say, is Kynite. If, in fact, they became a metal mining company, the processes in that operation can be substantially different than it would be for sand, for quarrying, or for aggregate. And I think we are obligated to sit down and talk to anybody who wants to do that kind of mining, so that we can fully understand what their processes are, so that the people in our community feel safe, and so that we can encourage the growth, economic growth by inviting those people into our community and allowing them to do that so long as it's safe. That's my position, Mr. Chairman. I'd like it noted.
Okay. I have no issue with your position, because I feel like it's probably is going to be the situation, we're probably not going to get a definitive answer from any of the state agencies. But at some point, I would say, just for right now, we'll continue with the comprehensive plan. What you're suggesting is we won't have to tie in with the comprehensive plan anyway. So in the interim, we'll work on the comprehensive plan till we get to that, that phase, and then we'll have to work on it then. If we expedite it forward and don't wait, we can do that. It's just, but I don't see any need to do it now until we get to that section of the comprehensive plan, because it's going to have to be changed anyhow, whatever ordinance we come up with.
All right.
You know, so, because it's going to affect both M1 and M2 districts.
That's right. And secondarily, I would like to.
Goodbye.
Okay. I would also like to ask whether or not it's in our purview to strongly recommend to the board from the commission that they come up with some sort of an ordinance, a law, that would indicate to us how much land or how, how much land should be set aside for solar farming? And quite frankly, does that mean land under the panels, or does it mean total land allocated? Because I got to tell you, land use to me means are they outside the zone, all right? And if I don't understand where the zone is, then I don't understand whether or not we're, we're appropriating properly an applicant's request for, for land use for solar farms. So I, I just, I, I don't know if it's within our purview to, to ask the board to move forward so that we can find, find out definitively what they want to do, if it's not fine, but I, I just, that question continues to bother me every time we have a solar project come before us.
I mean, we can ask, but they're, they already got a committee working on it, so all you're doing is asking the committee that's already working on it.
Well, but as Mr. Allen said, that basically it's a, it's a policy and it's not an ordinance.
Right now, that's what they got, but Danny, if I'm not correct, y'all've got a committee working on trying to come up with a solution, correct?
Right, they've already come up with a solution, and we were supposed to talk about it a little bit more last meeting. We did talk about it some, but the vote was never taken, and the issue is there, whether we're going to do what's they call fenced in, or do what the whole property is.
Right. Will this, will this end up being an ordinance? Danny, is it, are you?
Not right now, I won't know. You have to take it to have a public hearing and all with it, to make an ordinance or the other. I guess we'll finish it out, have it where we can work with, and then, then we'll be able to change it or see if it wants to be put into the ordinance.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other commissioners? Saying undo, have a motion to adjourn.
No move.
All right, have a motion and second. All in favor, raise your right hand. We are adjourned. Thank you.